So you just asked me for the license, not a waiver on the county fee or anything like that? It's just the license.
Yep.
We're just waiting for it to allow consumption of certain services.
My concern is that without having, there are young people, people under 21, I mean, an ID really isn't, I mean, is there some way that you can identify them better? I mean, with a wristband or something to make sure you're not serving underage children, underage people who are not legally able to drink?
Yeah, we certainly can. We have a committee right now that's full of volunteers and so we're planning and so this is our first year, so we're welcoming any suggestions or anything like that, we appreciate. We will have two security there as part of the agreement with the RH building.
I move that we approve the request for the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center.
There's been a motion, is there a second? There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed, thank you.
Item 6D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request for Bonnie Brudieska, graphic stitching, to be categorized as a local business on the application for a itinerant merchant license. This request is one that the city's received in the past, I'm not sure how many years it looks like in the item of 2012 through 2017, this was approved. As you all know from previous items and also our discussion at the workshop today that had to do tangentially with the itinerant merchant license, the original policy position of the commission was that there would be a bifurcated pay system for mobile businesses and our itinerant merchants. One was for businesses who had a local physical presence and one for folks who did not, that would represent what a business would have otherwise been paying in real property tax. It was determined in 2012 and subsequently in each year since, that while Ms. Brudieska did not own property within the city limits, or owned a business inside the city limits of Garden City, she did inside Fiddy County. The commission has therefore determined in the past that that met the intent of the policy. So staff recommends approval as has been done in previous years, it comes to worship the commission, but consistent with this with past years, according to directional basis of this license.
I have a comment on this because I think, well, it was a difficult position because the best of this particular business owner has been to allow this, it clearly doesn't meet the ordinance, I mean, it clearly doesn't meet our ordinance, and so I feel like we need to be consistent and fair in our application of the ordinance, and I think we need to maybe then look at changing the ordinance versus taking on these, into those special situations.
I appreciate that Ms. Brudieska's owned a business for many years and it is located within Fiddy County, and I know that, I've seen her business set up over there by Baker Boone for many years, and I know that she does keep it clean, but again, I think maybe a reexamination of the ordinance so that we can go further on really making this really consistent. I move that we approve the, I move to approve the itinerant merchant license.
There's been a motion, is there a second? There's been a second by Commissioner Fink, is there any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Burns voted nay on that item, okay. That item did pass, we're moving on to item?
Item C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request to approve a local boutique store, to categorize this as a local business on the application for a itinerant merchant license. Ms. Hernandez has been a lifelong government city resident, has just recently started her mobile boutique store, her business does not have a physical address in Garden City or Fiddy County, the requirements for a itinerant merchant must to be considered local is that they must have a physical business within the location of more than 1,000 square feet. Past commissions have expanded the definition of local to include businesses physically located outside of the city limits, but in Fiddy County, past commissions have also expressed a willingness to have a host business pay the license at a local rate to accommodate a vendor which they felt benefited their own business by having it temporarily locate there. Last summer, the commission negotiated a period of time for a food truck to operate under an annual local license with conditions that they would establish a physical location by a certain date or be responsible for paying the difference between the local rate and the local rate.
I have a question, is this gonna be like a ban?
That'd be a better question for the applicant.
Hi.
Please come forward.
Hi. My name's Hope Hernandez, so I'm the owner of Kermit Field Boutique. We're actually a clothing boutique for women, so we have clothing and accessories. My boutique is located inside of a vintage camper, and so I would request to be a local merchant, just because I'm from Garden City, I've lived here my entire life, and I would like to do business inside of the city that I was born and raised in. My intention is to move my business as it grows to be a brick and mortar. Right now, this kind of innovative business model is the direction that I'm going in, so I'm requesting to be a local merchant. Do you have any questions?
So how long do you think before you would move into the, is it a year or longer?
So in my head, in my vision, it would be about a two-year process before I became brick and mortar. I do like the mobile vending business model because it brings kind of a bigger city feel to southwest Kansas, to Garden City, and my intention is to collaborate with other businesses to generate more attention to them, so like hair salons, partnering with coffee shops, things of that nature.
Have you talked with other brick and mortars that you might locate in or work in partnership or collaboration with, so you'd have that part of the ordinance met?
Yes, so I have talked to a few hair salon owners, coffee shop owner, and then the owner of City on Hill, because I was interested in parking in his parking lot, but he informed me that the city actually owns that parking lot, so I didn't know if I, I obviously need permission to park there as well.
That's been an issue that's come up before the commission as well, maybe we'll park on public property in the public streets, so I would encourage you to look at that and make sure you're operating within the ordinance as it stands. I think this is another situation where you're kind of asking for a special exception. I can understand your point of view, this is maybe business models have changed since we've looked at this ordinance, maybe we need to revisit that, and I would absolutely support it, but as the ordinance stands today, it is, I don't think that this qualifies either.
I agree, I think that particularly this one here is different from the previous one, we just had the previous one, it's only been for a number of years, it's been over the set period of time in prisons, she's wanting to set up a full-time business where it's 65 days a year, it does not compare to that one, and this is a longer thing, and once we set the residence for you to do this, then that's gonna open the door for other people to come in and just come up and not have to pay, or at least pay the residence one, it's $300 versus the six or nine, whatever happens to be, but I think it's a difference between oranges and apples, and I think personally I would have to say no.
My business would not operate 365 days a year, this is not what I do full-time. I'm actually the agency manager for Farm Bureau Financial Services, and I cover the southwest Kansas territory, so it wouldn't operate 365 days a year.
I love the innovation, and I mean, I think it sounds, I mean, really neat and fun, I think it's very unique, and I mean, you could, well, women's clothing stores, but you could always use more clothing stores, and so I mean, I think that's, I agree, as the ordinance is written, it really ties our hands to, you know, really, you're not really a merchant that has 1,000 square feet, we're hosting.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
So I'll make the motion to deny the request to be considered a local business, and if part of that could be considered non-local business and pay the fees related to it. There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Item 6D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the mayor proclaim Tuesday, November 27th, as match day.
So do you want to make a motion to approve that?
I move that we approve November 27th, 2018 as match day.
Second thought?
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Yes, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Connie Bogart, I'm the executive director of Western Kansas Community Foundation, and thank you for approving this proclamation. It's a very exciting day, November 27th is globally now Giving Tuesday, the day following Thanksgiving in our country, which kicks off the charitable season, if you will, it's of course right after Thanksgiving, going into Christmas season. We encourage citizens to give back to the communities and donate to the nonprofits that we have abundantly here in Garden City. So, the Western Kansas Community Foundation is hosting a match day for 28 nonprofits in our region. We raise money for those nonprofits, and we have $50,000 in matching dollars available for the organizations that participate. So we give those matching dollars proportionately to the organizations that raise their own money for their mission. So, our office is open from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 in the evening, there are other participating organizations that collect donations as well, and we are going to do a major outreach to the community with radio ads and you name it, so you will hear more from this, I promise. But this is a wonderful support, thank you for supporting the Giving Tuesday idea, which is really, you know, a support for collective giving, not only in our community, but nationwide, globally. So thank you.
Do you want to get a picture right quick with the picor?
It'd be great.
I see there's a group of you with the same shirts on and stuff, so.
Blue t-shirt.
Well, there's like a hole. Everybody's got these matching day shirts.
Except for Ken, he's a peacock.
You all got churro?
I think he's a churro.
He looks a little odd.
I thought you said Florida's low.
Your shirt's in there.
I'm a sandwich eater.
Sure. All right. Congratulations, good luck.
Item 6D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the mayor proclaim the week of November 12th through 16th as American Education Week.
Entertained a motion for the proclamation?
Make a motion to approve the proclamation.
There's been a motion to approve the proclamation, is there a second? There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, lady in the school districts here. Okay.
Item 6, item 6L, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the mayor proclaim the week of November 12th through 16th as American Education Week.
Entertained a motion for the proclamation?
Make a motion to approve the proclamation.
There's been a motion to approve the proclamation, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, lady in the school districts here. Okay.
Item 6L, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the mayor proclaim November 11th of 2018 as Veterans Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertained a motion?
I'd like a motion to proclaim November 11th, 2018 Veterans Day in Garden City, Kansas.
There's a motion, is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed and welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Commander Donna Hernandez of the Henry H. Rinnick Post Number Nine in Garden City, Kansas. I want to thank you for allowing myself and Jim Arwin, who have all left me, to allow us to address you today. 100 years ago at 11:00 AM on November the 11th, 1918, the armistice to end World War I began. It was a conflict so horrific that many referred to it as a war to end all wars. Sadly, that didn't prove to be the case. Eventually, citizens of the United States asked their congressman to designate November the 11th as a federal holiday. In 1954, it officially became known as Veterans Day. Ceremonies to honor all who have served their nation in times of war have become common in small and large communities. As it has for many years, American Legion Post Number Nine will celebrate the solemn day with a community parade and ceremony on November the 10th. Therefore, we would be honored to have this government body proclaim November the 11th, November the 10th, 2018, as Veterans Day in Garden City, Kansas. Thank you, and please attend our celebrations at the post after the parade and on Saturday.
I've got the proclamation here. I can read it right quick too, in one. We need to approve the 11th because it has sun very soon. The proclamation reads, whereas Veterans Day is its origins in the November 11th, 1918 armistice, which brought World War I to a conclusion, and whereas the Allied victory in World War I affirmed the strength of great nations acting together for high purposes, and whereas November 11th was first recognized as a legal holiday in 1938, and in 1954 became officially known as Veterans Day. Pretty much gave us all that information before, but that's okay. Whereas Veterans Day continues to be celebrated and commemorated with solemn observances in honor of all Americans who have served their country in times of war and conflict, and whereas the courage, honor, sacrifice, and dedication that veterans of the United States Armed Forces have displayed in the cause of justice, freedom, and democracy are more worthy of recognition now. Now, therefore, I, Roy Sestner, Mayor of Garden City, do hereby call upon all residents to commend America's veterans and observe the solemn pride on Sunday, November 11th, 2018, as Veterans Day, and ask that the day be observed with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. Signed and sealed the 6th day of November, 2018, Roy Sestner, Mayor. Take, you want to? Yeah. There we go.
Want one more?
It's all right, thank you, congratulations.
Mayor and commissioners, item 7A, Chief Utes is here to provide an update on the status of the department's organizational study, and then following this report, we would ask the mayor to select a commissioner for the interview board for the proposals. Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. The police department command staff along with the city administrative staff have worked together to develop a request for proposal that includes a timeline and scope to conduct the police department organizational study. This study was brought up during the most recent commission retreat to help improve recruitment and retention. The study shall evaluate structure, staffing, and management of the organization along with the actual needs of the community, and any other recommendations necessary to improve workflow, enhance accountability, optimize service delivery, and promote transparency. Staff is excited to get this process underway and is currently working on several research projects that will provide helpful information to the selected firm. As part of this process, a six-person selection committee will interview the firms and submit proposals. Those interviews are set to take place on November 26th and 27th. The police department would request the mayor to appoint a commissioner to hold one of the six seats on the selection committee.
And I have asked Commissioner Dale if he would like to serve on that committee, and he has accepted that position, so. Is that correct, Miss Commissioner Dale? So yes, he is going to help on that selection committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to kind of reiterate, there will be a lot of opportunities for different touch points with that organizational study for commissioner's staff, folks in the community, other stakeholders as well, so we look forward to that getting underway. Item B through.
F.
C, Skippin' the Cover D and E, F, B, C, and F are typical monthly reports, if you've got questions on those, staff's ready to answer them. We just want to call some attention and ask, ask if you consider some names for the community art and community grant and APAC grant committees? I think there's been a little bit of turnover in those, I don't know, folks moved or folks cycling off the board, so if you've got some folks that you think might be drawn to do that, that would be great. Historically, those have been competitive applications, so the committee only meets like two or three times a year, but those two or three times are all in one month, there's a little bit of homework involved.
I just ask the commissioners to submit those names to Matt, if you have, or.
Directly to Jennifer.
Jennifer. Either Matt or Jennifer, but, and then we can go from there, get any other comments.
The first meeting in, first regular meeting in January falls on the 1st, we won't be here, so we'd ask you to consider a different date for that. In the past, if there was a holiday on Tuesday, the meeting's been moved to Thursday, either at 9:00 AM or 1:00 PM. That doesn't mean anything other than that's what's been done in the past. If those times have worked for you, please identify one.
So you're proposing January, Thursday, January 3rd, is that correct? At the same time?
Yes, it can be, yes.
Or we've done it at like 9:00 in the morning. Either way.
I won't be able to attend any of that week, so I discount my attendance.
Sounds good.
How many commissioners are going, would be able to make it on the 3rd? We've got two that, so we would have three out of five, would, would, you would?
No, I can make it on the 3rd, I was considering Commissioner Burns, I would have.
We could move it to the.
Would the 8th work better for everybody?
I could do the 8th.
8th work better?
The following Tuesday.
The following Tuesday?
Thanks.
Okay.
Is that a Tuesday? It's a Tuesday.
Or, no, the 8th is Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, we have two, we have the measure, we're going to move off the line.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll just move it to.
January.
January 8th, yeah?
At 1:00 PM.
At 1:00 PM?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, item G, congratulations to Garden City Fire Chief Alan Shelton on the occasion of his being named Fire Chief of the Year by the Kansas State Association of Fire Chiefs. And Chief, that's a big honor, congratulations. The event was held here in Garden City, the annual conference where they make this announcement is held here in Garden City, and so Chief and the command staff in the fire department were busy playing host to area fire chiefs, you know, it was a nice way to cap off the weekend festivities, so Chief, congratulations.
Would you like to say anything? Would you like to say anything?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you all very much for allowing me to serve the committee for the last 44 years and to especially the last 36 years as a fire chief. It's been an honor to serve with all those men and women over the years in Garden City. You can't accomplish this by yourself, you have to have the people around you, especially the city managers, and I've been so fortunate during our conference, I was able to talk about Mr. Wiley hiring me back in '75, and then Bob Allen was assistant city manager at that time, and then worked for Bob, and then Matt being assistant city manager, also working for him, so in a career like mine, to serve as three city managers is amazing because most of the people you talk to have heard quite a few city managers during their careers, but I am very, very fortunate to have worked for all the city people, especially Matt and Mr. Wiley and Bob, and again, I really appreciate all the work that the firefighters have done, and I really have enjoyed serving alongside them, but thank you all very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Do we want to get a picture?
Picture real quick?
We can do a picture. Let's get all the commissioners around to do a picture with this one. Did, Ken, did you have something?
Tell us, good, thank you.
You good, okay.
Will join us up?
Short guys on the front, huh?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Don't get hit in there. We're good, all right. Thank you, congratulations.
Rinnick.
We have a public hearing scheduled, item 10A on our agenda, this is a public hearing, consideration to adopt the development plan and the establishment of a rural housing center district. The development is entitled The Hamptons Phase Two, and so I'll turn it over to Melissa. Following, well, first of all, opening of the public hearing, this won't be the first presentation, anybody else would be then invited to speak to the matter. Once you've exhausted all the public discussion, you can close the public hearing, and then the commission would be in a position to consider item 10A1, the ordinance establishing the RHID district, that would be ordinance number 2809-2018 if approved. Melissa?
All over the hearing first, hearing is open, okay. Melissa?
Hello, mayor and commissioners, we have the full staff report for you. This is Hampton's Phase Two development that comes before you. This is the last step the development needs to take before the city commission in the RHID process. The Hampton's Phase Two development will be located at the 2800 block of North Jenny Barker Road. This development will consist of 255 single-family homelots, the homes will have garages to provide for parking. According to our latest community housing assessment team study, our chat, to meet our housing needs, we need to build 112 housing units per year by 2020. The feasibility analysis for Hampton's Phase Two estimates 15 single-family homes will be built in years 2019 and 2020. Based on the current RHID feasibility analysis from the other existing RHIDs that you've passed within this year and before, we are predicting 65 houses to be built in 2018. Currently, we stand at 16 homes that have been built. Therefore, according to our chat, City Garden City does show a need for all the houses to be built in this development. Should this ordinance be adopted, the county, USD 457, and Garden City Community Colleges taxing entities will have the 30 days in which to evaluate the proposed RHID. Shall a taxing entity determine it has an adverse effects on their jurisdiction, then the taxing entities will need to adopt a resolution stating such. If no such resolutions are passed, then the ordinance shall be in effect. If within that timeframe, any of the taxing entities passes such a resolution, then the city will need to take action to repeal the ordinance as required by this statute. The alternatives before you, the governing body may elect to adopt the ordinance, or the governing body may elect to not adopt the attached ordinance. Staff recommends the governing body adopt, pardon, adopt the ordinance, there is no fiscal note, these developments are financed through private funds.
Community, you have any questions or concerns or comments on this? All closed, elicitating then? Any concerns or comments, questions?
So I know that they have the 5.5, five acres of land for parking and other purposes, and when we reviewed this the last time, it was up there in. would do that to encourage additional park space, rather than making that an option also.
We have preliminary plot from the back.
It's farther down, I think. It's the final plot is being approved and consented, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, when I saw it before, and I asked a question about, and I spoke with the city manager, and I understand that we can approve for other purposes, and it looks like it's for drainage, and I understand that, but again, I know where this is located, you'd have to cross a busy street, the nearest park is probably, um, you're going to have to go into the underpass or the overpass, whatever that is, you know, to get to the near park. So I just would encourage on these kind of, you know, parks, and I love it with your sidewalks and, you know, those kind of things, and this looks like an incredible, uh, place for young people, young families, and so again, I, I hope that we develop something more of a park rather than just, uh, another purposes part of it.
I concur with, with Commissioner Anro, and I think you look at the density of this and the density of the houses that are planned up there, and I, I really would hope that we would encourage a developer to reserve some of that for park space for the health of that community.
Actually, at this time, you give us an opportunity for you to do that, because they have the, the agreement as part of this, uh, with this development and how it designated as such, and you are approving it as RHID, so you have the ability to, and those costs for that to be added to the development plan, uh, to recruit those costs for that park and, and structure, I mean, you need to support that, so you, so you can request that to be added to the development agreement if you so chose.
I just know, I mean, when you, when you do these subdivisions where they're set apart and there's no, I mean, again, you think about where it's located and how hard it is to get to play space, and I'm just, I mean, the hard thing for me is to continue, I mean, if you build these subdivisions, which I love the layout, I think it's a great area, but I do think we need to dedicate more park space, or actually dedicate park space and not more of a drainage area. Because when I looked at the original plans and I questioned that, it was more of a drainage area and less, you know, less a park where really it's not, I mean, I'm not saying the kids won't play there, because, I mean, the outdoor play is great, so.
Caleb, do you have, uh, any idea of what tract to the retention pond and park? Uh, what portion of that is drainage and what portion of that is park?
If you, if you go to section three point four zero...
On page fourteen.
On page fourteen. They're naming it states parks, playgrounds, and recreation area, or two hundred and fifty-three single-family residential lots requested by subdivision. Request in general and dedicated or reserved for parks, playgrounds, and recreation purposes shall be at least four acres. The developer will dedicate five point five five of land for park and other purposes on the northwest corner of the development. These areas dedicated to the city, uh, the developer shall be responsible for establishing and maintaining the landscape, uh, with trees, grass, and irrigation, and will in turn, and will turn it over to the city after it has been established for one year. Otherwise, developer should pay cash and lieu at the rate of two hundred dollars per lot each lot. Um, this would be the, the area in agreement that we would either require, that solid dedication, that none of that include, uh, drainage, um, or be worth it in combination, um, of, of both in that area.
Is that feasible, Caleb? Really, can you build a, a really a usable space around a retention pond for recreation?
Actually, you can, a lot of places that, unfortunately for us, it's probably going to be a little bit more difficult because of the lack of moisture that we receive, but, uh, we have some detention areas in some communities that are actually soccer fields in the bottom of the detention, and they use the side walls of it, and it has a ditch that runs around it, but it's socketed with the middle, and it's, uh, and it's, uh, you know, the only time it's not usable is during a rain event, and usually those minutes that they cancel during that event. But yeah, they can be very creative in using those. Um, we're a little bit different, it makes, I'd agree, it would probably make it a little bit more difficult for us here, um, but it is possible.
Do you need to add the word acre in there for five point five? It just says dedicate five point five land, didn't say acre.
Thank you for that, we'll change that.
Well, I pictured that they actually said, I was really excited when I read through the agreement the first couple of times we've been through this, that we actually had the park space dedicated, and so that was great. And so, I mean, I know, and I, in talking to the city manager, I know that some of our places, they are, you know, I mean, they are less than, as far as the parks, that's why we're able to do it, because it can be water retention. So, I mean, again, I just, I just want to make sure that as we're developing as a city, these are the kind of things that make you want to live in an area, um, and, and, you know, having park space and place for kids to play, I mean, it's, it's vitally important that we get outside, so.
So, so Caleb, just to, just to clarify, the parkland set aside requirement indicated how much, if they chose not to, or, and we actually have the power to not accept, but if we said, hey, we're going to do it through parkland set aside and not going to do it through the fee, how many acres would be required?
Four, says I think.
Um, it's, it's based on the total number of units.
I know, so what, what's the calculation come out to be?
I believe that would, would be the five point five, five acres is the total that they would need.
So they sectioned off a, a part of land which met that set aside requirement, at least four acres of that will not be drainage area?
Correct.
And so, but, but we're allowing that to be one big green space, of which one point five acres could be...
Drainage.
Uh, could, could meet the drainage requirements or part of the drainage requirements, depending on the topography of the land of that whole development?
That's correct.
Okay.
I guess the only other concern is the accessibility to it too, from the majority of the development when you're looking at the way this is laid out.
There's only two access points to it laid out in the plat, um, and so everything else would be accessed via the sidewalks that would be installed. They are installing a ten-foot sidewalk trail, um, that will, it is installed out along, uh, the Mary Street and Jenny Barker will be connected to that, so their whole sidewalk system will eventually will tie into that as they develop the base as well, so.
Do we have to accept the otherwise, the developer shall pay in cash and lieu, because , so could they buy their way out of the park or...
They, you, you have the option not to accept it. For example, if you don't believe this is a, a good location for a park, you could do the fee and lieu, and then they would be required to pay that amount, and then you would use those funds to either purchase a park in that area and use it to, to develop a park in the area, uh, that's what the...
It wouldn't be within the footprint of that development, though. So you're going to exacerbate the problem about it being far away. I mean, it, it's probably one of the bigger subdivisions we've plotted in a long time, as far as one piece of land. Um, that being said, if you think about how far you are away from public spa, or, you know, city-owned park, if you live in certain, certain parts of the city, it's much further than anywhere else in this subdivision, even from the furthest point. Uh, it, it, it jumps out because this is one plat, and so, and that parkland is not centrally located. It is an uncommon for developers to pick ground that, uh, would otherwise be difficult and thereby more expensive to construct on. Yeah, it's not uncommon to pick, uh, kind of the residual pieces that would make it hard to work a road in there and get developable lots that are, uh, uniform and shaped.
Is it, do they have green space?
There is green space.
Far northwest corner, and it also has a portion that's, uh, drainage, I believe.
Right, yes.
Okay.
We, yeah.
The drainage historically doesn't count towards the total amount, but the open space that's usable, the four acre minimum, uh, is.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance twenty-eight oh nine dash twenty eighteen. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, good.
Commissioner Dale made the second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you, Melissa, thanks Caleb. Um, all right, Caleb, grab a chair, you're going to be up here for the next hour.
Are we going down the line now, Matt?
Yeah, we're in order now. Um, some of the changes I mentioned to you in the workshop, Jared had already incorporated into the draft that you're reading. Uh, and I think that's consistent with the packet they have opened up, is that right?
The updated packet that you sent earlier.
If it isn't, feel free to call a timeout, and we'll get everybody else on the same page. Item, what are we, ten B, is that right? Ten B? The governing, uh...
Oh, we...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nine, nine eight.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Meetings of note, uh, we've made the January eighth meeting, the first regular meeting of two thousand and nineteen, we'll add that to the list. Uh, there's a few events that require RSVPs, please do those through Jared this week if you could. If you don't have any questions on section eight, then we're ready for nine A appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be twenty-four seventy dash two thousand and eighteen A.
And I'll make a motion, we approve, uh, appropriation ordinance number twenty-four seventy dash twenty eighteen A.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, nay. That item passed.
All right, now we're in order.
All right.
Ten B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a rezone from A agricultural district to R one, single-family residential district for property located at East Mary Street and Jenny Barker Road in Garden City, Kansas. If approved, this would be ordinance number twenty-eight ten dash two thousand and eighteen. Caleb?
All right, uh, this is the, the property that we just discussed in regards to RHID, this is the zoning, uh, change for the entirety of the property. You have the complete staff report in your packet, um, that, um, describes this rezoning request, and it went before the planning commission, um, on, uh, September twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and was recommended unanimously, uh, to be approved by all five planning commission representatives present. Um, there is no fiscal note, and staff recommendation was also, uh, approval of the rezoning request. Any questions?
I move it, we approve ordinance twenty-eight ten dash two thousand and eighteen.
There's been a motion, is there a, oh, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the Garden City zoning regulations to amend section fifteen dash zero three zero regarding conditional uses allowed in the C two, general commercial district. This action, if approved, would allow apartments to be considered as a conditional use in the C two district. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-eight eleven dash two thousand and eighteen. Caleb?
You have, uh, in your packets, the, uh, complete staff report regarding this request. Um, the applicant, uh, Edwin Pauls, uh, has, uh, brought in or requested an amend the conditional use permit section in the Garden City zoning regulations. The applicant would like to, uh, be able to turn an older hotel in and into an apartment complex. The amendment request would add into the conditional uses in section fifteen point oh three oh to allow apartments. Currently, apartments above ground floor level are allowed in the C three central business district. By allowing apartments in the C two general commercial district, it would allow older vacant buildings and hotels to be renovated into apartment complexes. This would also allow for income appropriate housing and allow for more properties within the C two general commercial district to be used that are currently underutilized. Um, this amendment is, uh, is for the whole community, allows for, um, as a conditional use in all, uh, C two zoning districts, and it's highlighted, uh, the amendment, which would add item N apartments as a conditional use, uh, which means that each applicant for property would come in on a case-by-case basis. This was discussed by the planning commission on October eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Um, as they discussed it, one of the things that they felt was important is because of our great housing demand that we currently have, we have a lot of, um, commercial areas that are underutilized, um, that this would allow, uh, some of those areas, if a conditional use permit was issued, to be, uh, to be, uh, renovated and utilized in a more appropriate way. Um, and, uh, so what you have before you is, uh, your alternatives are, is the governing body may approve the amendment as it has been presented, and the governing body may approve the amendment with changes, or the governing body may not approve the amendment. Staff recommends approval of the amendment, and the planning commission recommended unanimously seven zero, uh, to approve, uh, this amendment.
What, is that on Fulton?
Um, the location of, of, of Mr. Pauls, that he is interested in is, is located on Fulton Street. Again, this would be a two-step process, this does not approve any locations, they would be go to the border zoning, apply and go through the border zoning appeals, a public hearing would be held, adjacent property owners would be notified, and a hearing, uh, to discuss the particulars of that specific location. The planning discuss, commission did discuss that, and they felt that, you know, there would be some areas that would be appropriate and others that would not be appropriate, and, uh, but they felt this would be the venue to go with the conditional use permit, and border zoning appeals could look at it on a case-by-case basis. So the border of zoning appeals is a stopgap to make sure it's appropriate and it fits in the order, and you're going to make sure the regulations are known, so that's what you're going to use that for? That's right, they look at it on a case-by-case basis, uh, as outlined in the zoning regulations for, um, conditional uses, um, the particular area, um, how, yeah, how long has it been vacant, um, what are the adjacent uses? Because there will be some areas that won't be compatible, for example, for traffic or noise, a commercial business right next door may not be appropriate for apartments to be right up against, but others might be, and so, uh, and they felt that was the appropriate thing, is to do it on a case-by-case basis, um, and go from there.
So they'd still have to have four stalls per apartment?
They still have to meet all the requirements of the zoning regulations for apartments. Correct.
Wow.
Well, apartments are less than...
Well, I guess than a duplex.
Yes.
A duplex is four.
Duplex is four, because it's considered the same as a single family.
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-eight eleven dash two thousand and eighteen.
There's been a motion for ordinance twenty-eight eleven dash twenty eighteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, nay. That passed.
Item ten D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the Garden City zoning regulations, section twenty-three zero two zero, twenty-three zero eight zero and twenty-three zero nine zero, this is, um, collectively the sign ordinance and regulations. Uh, if approved, the ordinance, uh, would be number twenty-eight twelve dash two thousand and eighteen. Uh, Caleb, you can explain the changes?
Yes, um, what you have, uh, before you have, you have the full staff report regarding this amendment. Um, this is, amendment is particular to electronic message boards, or EMBs, um, and, uh, this was a request from the public. Um, we have, uh, the planning commission took this up for all three jurisdictions, we're trying to make it where if you're in county or the city or Holcomb, the regulations are somewhat the same, um, uh, on that for, uh, business purposes as well as for management purposes of, uh, of these regulations. And so, um, with, uh, EMB signs, the technology is constantly changing, uh, matter of fact, by the time we get this adopted, it's probably going to have changed, uh, uh, between now and then. Um, some of the EMB, uh, signage is, is considered as illuminated signage and comes in, in multiple forms, depending on the technology that's being used. They include fluorescent, incandescent bulbs, light emitting diodes, and liquid crystal displays. Um, and we, uh, staff reviewed over ordinances from Manhattan, Kansas, Topeka, Kansas, and Madison, Wisconsin, as we reviewed, um, this request for amendments, um, and it's highlighted in yellow in your staff report, um, and, and, uh, your, uh, your ordinance, um, that you have attached reflects these changes highlighted in yellow. These changes are the only changes that are occurring in the, in regards to these, and they are as follows. Section twenty-three point oh two oh is illumination from electronic message boards between sunrise and sunset, the maximum luminescence shall be five thousand nits, and between sunset and sunrise, the maximum luminescence shall be five hundred nits. All EMBs must be equipped with an automatic dimmer control or other mechanism that automatically controls the sign's luminescence. Section twenty-three oh eight oh would amend this... The maximum luminescence shall be 5,000 nits, and between sunset and sunrise, the maximum luminescence shall be 500 nits. All EMBs must be equipped with an automatic dimmer control or other mechanism that automatically controls the sign's luminescence. Section 23.080 would amend this section, and would read, EMB must be equipped with an automatic dimmer control or other mechanism that is automatically controls the sign's brightness between sunset and sunrise to comply with a maximum luminescence of 250 nits. And Section 23.080 would be amended to read as follows, a limit of one stagnant nonintimidated message change every 15 seconds. This went before, as stated before, the Planning Commission on October 11th, with all seven planning commissioners recommending unanimously approval of this amendment. Staff recommend approval of this amendment as presented, and.
And the county also approved this just recently. There were more meetings yesterday?
The county approved theirs yesterday, yes.
So with these changes, what would it do with the current, all the signs in the community, then?
Because all it does is, as it relates to timing, and the timing is related to those located in residential districts, basically we're making all signs 15 seconds, regardless of the zoning districts. So it doesn't affect any of the existing signs, other than the fact that the current signs brightnesses, they may not have the automatic filtering or dial that will set back luminescence, so they have to manually do that.
Okay.
And so it really doesn't impact them, other than they have to manually adjust those. And most of those are in compliance with this.
Okay. Just wanting to make sure. Start making regs, and we've got all these signs out there, and they're going to have to try to figure out how to do that, so.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2812-28?
Team.
2018.
Say again?
There's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2812-2018. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item 10E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the ordinance for codification of City of Garden City zoning regulations. Hang on one moment. This is a general action that would bring the 2011 zoning regulations and all the subsequent changes into a new formal system or code for users to more easily follow. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2813-2018. Caleb?
All right. You have your, the complete staff report in your packet. Basically, what just happened is, in 2011 was our last codification, or when we go through all of the zoning regulations, and we've had a lot of amendments between 2011 and current. And so what we've done is gone through those regulations, making sure that all the regulations that had been passed are properly located, and going through and checking for typographical errors, verbiage clarifications, and formatting of the zoning regulations. All those, all the corrected spelling and clarification verbiage have been indicated with strike-through or highlights. We did not highlight all of the ordinance amendments, because those all came to you independently, and we have a copy of those ordinances already. The city attorney and staff went through this codification, and this went before the Planning Commission on June 21st, 2018, and was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Any questions?
I move we approve ordinance 2813-2018.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second to approve ordinance 2813-2018. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Hi, Caleb.
I love him.
The next several items are nuisance items. This, if approved, would be resolution number 2749, and it would abate nuisances at 409 North Fifth Street.
Right. All of these, before we get started, I want to introduce Caitlin. Caitlin is our new code compliance officer. And so I just want to take a note to introduce her as we go through these resolutions, that she's worked on and is intimately familiar with most of these cases that are here. The first case is regarding 409 North Fifth Street. These are typical cases that you see on a regular basis. We just have several of them for you today. This is in regards to 409 North Fifth Street, in regards to inoperable vehicle. It's a blue Honda Civic. Any questions?
Again, the standard where you sent the note.
Correct.
We haven't heard anything back from them on this or anything.
That's correct. All of these, up to this point, we've sent out the notices, no response to those notices. We've now sent them, bringing them to you. They will then, you'll pass this resolution, they will then have the time allotted in the resolution to finalize it, or the property in this case will be towed.
I move that we approve resolution 2749-2018.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second to approve resolution 2749-2018. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item G is a resolution that would remove a nuisance at 1017 North Sixth Street. If approved, it would be resolution 2750-2018. Caleb?
Again, this is a violation for the Durango. It's located on the property.
I move that we approve resolution 2750-2018.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to that motion. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
All right, I tell you what, I'll skip, turn it over to Caleb. If you've got questions, you know he's standing there. Item H is also a nuisance abatement, resolution for 1611 Hattie. If approved, it would be 2751-2018.
I'll make a motion to approve 2751-20-18 for removal of 1611. Correction, I'm sorry, it's 2750, isn't it?
No, you were right.
Okay.
Fifty-one.
1611 Hattie Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's been a motion to approve resolution 2751-2018. Is there a second on that?
Second.
There is a second. Any other discussion on that item?
Caleb, why don't you tell them what it is, so at least there's consideration of.
Yes.
Sure.
This is a violation for inoperable vehicle.
I know.
Inoperable is also, inoperable is untagged.
Sure.
And/or perceptive to the public as inoperable, missing parts, or.
Okay. All in favor of resolution 2751-2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item I is a resolution removing a motor vehicle nuisance from 506 Pennsylvania in an operable white Ford Granada. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2752-2018.
I move that we approve resolution 2752-2018.
Seconded.
There's been a motion and a second. And again, same.
Yes, for a untagged or inoperable vehicle.
Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passed.
Item J, another resolution removing another motor vehicle nuisance, 412 Prospect, a black and gray Chevy S10 pickup, untagged or inoperable. If approved, it would be ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution number 2753-2018.
I'll make a motion we approve resolution 2753-2018.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item K, a resolution removing motor vehicle nuisance from 1606 York Avenue, an untagged or inoperable dark blue Dodge pickup. If approved, it would be resolution number 2754-2018.
I didn't have a question about this one. So this one has a tag. Is it just that it's been sitting in the same place for the same amount of time, and we assume it's inoperable because of that?
Right, and/or the tag on it is expired.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Correct. And it's important to note that any of these vehicles, even up till the 10-day notice that we have, can come in and show that they have tagged them and that they are operable, and the case will be closed.
So is there a reason why there's so many this time, or is it just they all came hit at once?
Yeah, we actually had.
Or Caitlin's been really busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, well Caitlin's only been with us just about a month now, and so some of these cases are cases carried over, some of them are new cases, and so it's just, at this time, it's just that they all, their deadline dates came, or we've given them extensions, and they've missed their extension timeframe, and they just came together all at once, so.
Okay.
Make a motion we approve resolution 2754-2018.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item 10L, it's a resolution removing a motor vehicle nuisance from 1612 Hattie, an untagged or inoperable silver Buick sedan. If approved, it would be resolution number 2755-2018.
I move that we approve resolution 2755-2018.
There's been, there's been a motion and a second to approve resolution 2755-2018. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item 10M, this is a resolution removing an environmental nuisance from 1615 Johnson Street. If approved, it would be resolution number 2756-2018.
What is that?
This is, with the picture here, you can see the debris and trash in the rear yard. That's the items that would be need of removal.
Is this one we had a few months back, the stuff in front?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, it is. Yep. This is the one we just, actually, we just cleaned up yesterday for their, the front porch area. This is the rear yard of that property.
It's not the front stuff, it's different stuff.
I don't guarantee that, so, but.
Okay.
That's your new process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just moved it.
Right. So they say that the front yard, the front porch has been taken care of. This is for the rear yard, and when this was originally cited, there was, the citation for the rear yard wasn't included in the front yard citation, so.
So it's not one, do you normally do one citation?
Normally, if we're there and we see the whole thing, then we would, but if the complaint, if we received a complaint and it was strictly just the front yard, and we went and no one gave us anything in regards to anything else, we went strictly for that. If we didn't see the backyard when we did it, then it just, we'd send it as a separate nuisance.
I always have a question about some of these, you know, has there been any response from this homeowner, because I just wonder if they need help with this, if they're physically unable to clean this up, or?
We do talk with each of them when we go and talk to them at the door, or after they received a notice and they contact us. We will work with them to put them in contact with an organization like Scouts, Girl Scouts, church youth groups, organizations that will assist them if they need assistance. We do ask that question if they do need help.
Good.
We also let them know that there are programs, you know, that they could have the rented truck come and park in their front yard, if they can get people to load it up for them. Yeah, we go through every option we possibly can to, the ideal situation is that they take care of it and bathe it themselves. Us having to clean it up is our last resort. We try to work with them on that, so unfortunately, sometimes we just don't get the response.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I move that we approve ordinance 2756, I think, is that correct?
That's correct. It's resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry. Resolution number 2756-2018.
Say again?
There's been a motion and a second to approve resolution 2756-2018. Is there any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item 10N is a resolution removing an environmental nuisance from 307 North 12th Street. If approved, it would be resolution number 2757-2018.
I move we approve resolution 2757-2018.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Dale made the second. All in, any other discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes.
As you've gone through these, just as clarification too, for you and the public as well, is that when, after these are passed, we'll send them a copy of the resolution, giving them the 10-day notice. They still have every opportunity to take care of it themselves, and we encourage them to do so. And so there is other opportunities for them to get that taken care of, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenner.
Thank you.
There's no old business, so 12A is item of new business. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Police Citizens' Advisory Board. The recommendation is to appoint Jared Springston to serve on the Police Citizens' Advisory Board, and Jared's been patiently waiting in the audience.
He's been observing city government at work.
That's right.
Caleb, you can ask too? That's right.
Captain?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. We have a recommendation from the Police Citizens Advisory Board to fulfill a position on the high school representative of the PCAB. They have met with Jared here, and recommend that the commission approve him as the high school representative.
I just want to say thank you for being willing to serve, and also knowing that your dad is on, so I just want to make sure that your voice is heard too. I think that's really important, so I really appreciate the work your dad does, not only on that, but also just in our community, so thank you for stepping up to serve. Appreciate it.
I move that we approve Jared for the Police Citizens Advisory Board.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the 2018 budget amendments that are necessary to reflect the actual 2018 expenditures. Melinda?
We have three funds that I would like for you to consider on amending. The first one is the Drug Enforcement Fund. The reason for that is we had a higher cash carryover, and we also had additional revenue with a drug forfeiture that happened during 2018, that we also had to pay out the agencies that helped with that. The second one is the HIDA grant. That is a new grant for 2018 that we didn't budget for last year. And then the Recreation Commission, there was higher motor vehicle taxes in 2018 than we had anticipated, so we're requesting that all of the funds be distributed to the Recreation Commission.
So, Melinda, can you explain again? So are you, were you increasing the budget by these amounts?
We are.
Okay.
As you can see on your notice that goes into the paper, the expenditure line item in the third column there, we have Drug Enforcement at $45,025. That was the original budget. We're increasing it to $144,500. The HIDA grant was not budgeted for, so there's a zero there, and we have $102,000 in expenses there being amended. The Recreation Commission, the expenditures were $1,02968, and we're increasing it to $1,155,120. This will have to be published in the paper in your meeting. To approve the budget will be on November 20th.
So where are these dollars coming from? Is that, that's why I was confused.
As far as the Drug Enforcement, there was additional, there was a large drug forfeiture that took place in 2018, so there was additional revenue. And to go along with that, we had to pay out the agencies that helped with that, so that increased the expenses. The HIDA grant was new. We're receiving about a third of the officer's salary from the grant, and then the city puts in the other two-thirds. And the Recreation Commission, that is from distribution from property tax from Infini County.
Thank you.
Melinda, the increase in the, or the amended Recreation Commission budget, while it gives the. while it gives the Recreation Commission the authority to spend up to the full amount of the taxes received, it doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna expend the full amount of taxes. Is that correct?
That's correct. We would distribute it to them, and they could hold it in their cash balance, uh, to start out the two thousand nineteen year, to help them out, hopefully, with their property tax in two thousand twenty.
So will they need to amend their budget with these new figures?
No.
Okay.
No.
Aren't they paying their own, uh, benefits now?
That starts in two thousand nineteen.
Nineteen, okay.
Yeah, that was the budget.
I was gonna say, this might help a little, right?
Mm-hmm. That's exactly right. Quite a bit, yeah.
I'll make the mo- oh, go ahead.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve the budget amendments and seek approval to publish the two thousand eighteen notice of budget hearing for amending the two thousand eighteen budget and setting the hearing on November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, at two P M.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say it. Oh, hold on.
This says we'll meet on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, at two P M. We're already past that.
Oh, sorry about that. We'll get that changed, before it goes in the paper.
So the public notice will indicate that we'll do it on November twentieth.
Yes. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, I just, I was just on earlier.
Any other discussion? Or anything that you notice? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
We did see already, uh...
That's right.
So...
So that means we're ready for the consent agenda. If there's nothing the commission would like to pull off and discuss, uh, individually, then the correct motion would be to approve the consent agenda D one through six.
And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for approval, consideration be D one through six.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Commissioners, uh, the staff would like you to, uh, consider going into an executive session that concludes the meeting, but we don't anticipate any action being taken by the commission following the executive session. So if the commission would like to, uh, do its reports now on T V, then we'll shut down the channel eight broadcast when you go into, uh, executive session, because that'll be the end of the public portion of the meeting.
And on commissioner reports, we have Commissioner Dale up first.
Okay, I thought the commission meeting was, uh, well today. I would like to see us have some consider, or, uh, conversation, look at the, the, uh, the thing for allowing people...
Attentive merchandise?
I think, I...
Can I pick that one up?
Yeah.
I agree that, um, we got it somewhere, we have to set the guideline. If we set the guideline, everybody has to follow it, and if the person that gets the temporary around December, they would then have an opportunity to make changes to do what they had to do, but at least we can give a clear, plain field for everybody to work with, so I thought your idea was very good. Uh, I hope everybody gets out and votes today. It's a very important election, not only within our community, but our state and across our country, and just, everybody get out there and do it. Um, Veterans Day is gonna be celebrated in the city on, on Saturday with the parade, and, and it was my honor to, to, uh, to be able to make a motion for the V F W to, to the American League to do what they did, and, and we do have a lot of veterans in our community, and they're, they contribute just like anybody else, and they're certainly worthy of that one day, regardless of whether it's clear back of World War Two, what few we have there, or even right up to today. So I appreciate and thank all of them and for their services, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Enroe?
So I also think it was an incredible meeting, lots of great discussion. I really appreciate the pre-meeting, um, how exciting that something might happen, uh, with coffee. I'm also just wanna, um, just, the Match Day, I think it's a, a really great opportunity for people to give to some very, um, worthy organizations, and so I would encourage you to stop by Match Day at the Western Kansas Community Foundation. It's kind of exciting, and sometimes they have treats there too. Not that I eat any of those, but, um, also, this, uh, this Friday is the, it's the start of the N J C A A cross-country tournament, and hopefully you can attend the, I know that, um, we on the Commission Visitors Bureau have invited the commissioners to attend. It's gonna be, I'll tell you, there's some incredible young people, over six hundred runners, so if you can imagine six hundred people out on a rough horse, um, and it's a really great honor, and the dollars it brings to our community right now, every single motel and hotel is full. There is not. So if you were planning on anyone coming up this weekend, they, they won't have a room, love to stay, hopefully not in Dodge City, but somewhere. But, um, but the N J, so that, and, uh, so that actually takes place, if you'd like to come and help, um, you're welcome to on Saturday. The last thing I just wanted to say is that there are many opportunities. I'm excited about the Veterans Day Parade this Saturday, and I like Commissioner Dale. They've done so much for this country, and I just want to make sure we honor them and thank them for their incredible service.
Commissioner Birds?
Yeah, I would echo what my fellow commissioners said, and it is an exciting time, this time of year, um, especially as we're looking towards the holidays, and as, as Ms. Baumgart mentioned, this is just the kickoff of the holiday and the charitable season. Um, and I also like to congratulate Chief Shelton. That's a huge, a huge achievement, and so, uh, I think we can all be very proud of his service and the service to our department, and to have that honor is very, very cool, so, congratulations again to him.
Commissioner Finkhauser?
Um, last Thursday, I attended the Great Plains Development Annual Meeting and represented the city, and, um, it was a good meeting. We had a large group there, uh, from all over the state. Um, don't forget to vote today. You got till seven o'clock, and I too would like to congratulate Chief Shelton on his award. That's all.
I'd like to mention, like the other commissioners have, please go out and vote. Um, that's the neat part of our country, you have that ability to voice your, uh, give that voice to who will be leading not only the community, but the state, as well as the nation. Uh, again, congratulations to Chief Shelton for his award. I did the welcome at the Kansas Chiefs Firefighters, uh, State Conference that was here in the community, and had a lot of chiefs from around the state here, and it was, uh, great to see them here visiting our community, and their wives were out and about throughout the community, so, um, great to see them, uh, out and about spending their, their money in our community, and receiving those tax dollars. Uh, I would like to thank the Garden City Police Department, um, Horace Good Middle School, the Finney County Sheriff's Department, the Kansas Highway Patrol, the Finney County Emergency Management, uh, for all of their efforts in, um, doing security for the debate that was held with the gubernatorial candidates. Uh, it was a great event. If you didn't attend, I know we're replaying it on channel eight, uh, but, um, really nice to see the candidates out in here, out in this part of the state, um, with the issues that we have across the nation. It was nice to have that, that, um, feeling of security at that event, so, uh, I'd really like to thank all those people in law enforcement that did help. Um, I know it took a lot of extra time and effort, but it turned out very well, uh, for that event. Again, um, like I said, please go out and vote. It, it's part of what, who we are in America, and it's your right, and it gives you a voice in our democracy.